I call this meeting of Township High School District 211 Board of Education to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Cavill.
Here.
Mr. Kramer.
Here.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Here.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Here.
Mr. Rosenblum.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Lefather.
Here.
Would everyone please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a suggestive motion that the Board of Education interclose session to discuss minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act and the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees. Second, roll call, please.
Ms. Cavill.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mr. Lefather.
Aye.
Okay, we'll return to open session. May we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Cavill.
Here.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mr. Lefather.
Aye.
All right, first thing to business is recognitions. For that, I'll turn it over to our superintendent, Dr. Small.
Thank you. It is my pleasure to introduce Mr. Mark Kovak, our Associate Superintendent for Student Services. He will introduce us tonight to our National Merit Scholars. Mr. Kovak.
Thank you, and good evening, Board of Education, Dr. Small, administration, faculty, and our honored guests. For more than 60 years, the National Merit Scholarship Program has been recognizing and honoring our country's most academically talented students. It's my pleasure to introduce you tonight to one half of a group from District 211, students from the class of 2021, who have distinguished themselves as National Merit Scholars. The National Merit Scholarship Competition for these students began last October, when as juniors, they completed the PSAT, along with 1.6 million other American high school students. Based on their performance on that assessment, 16,000 American high school students received recognition from the College Board as semifinalists in the National Merit Scholarship Competition. So these District 211 students with us tonight qualified with that status and are among the top 1% of all students in the country. Tonight, each of these students has been presented with District 211's Robert Creek Excellence Award. The award is named in honor of Robert Creek, who served District 211 as a board member for 20 years, 19 of those as board presidents. Mr. Creek distinguished himself by promoting a consistent vision of student and teacher excellence in our school district. I would ask that students and their parents stand when I call your names, so you can be Nathan Orango from Fremd High School. And actually, the next string of students will all be from Fremd, and I'll let you know when we change schools. As you can imagine, each of these students is highly involved in our schools, and it's not uncommon for us to have people that have conflicts. So I'm glad to have recognized her, even though she couldn't join us this evening. And then we have a set of students from Conant High School. And Matthew Schmidt. I congratulate each of these students and their families on this outstanding accomplishment and the exciting opportunities that await them. Thank you.
Every high school student who prepares for college is aware of the importance placed on standardized college entrance exams, including the American College Test, which we know as the ACT. The highest possible composite score a student can earn on the ACT is 36. Statistically, less than 1/10 of 1% of students taking the ACT achieve the highest score. For over 20 years, the Board of Education has recognized students who have achieved the highest score possible of 36 on the ACT. Tonight, we are excited to recognize and honor a student from Conant High School who has achieved this remarkable accomplishment. With the addition of this student, District 211 now has 140 students who have reached this outstanding achievement. On behalf of the Board of Education and High School District 211, I would like to congratulate our student and let you know that we have a certificate for you to pick up after the meeting. At this time, I ask Conant High School mathematics teacher Derek Fevelson to come forward to introduce our student.
All right, thanks for having me tonight. Nivee, if you'd please stand. So this is Nivee Krishnan from Conant High School, perfect ACT. She's here with her father, Ganesh, and I'm assuming her mother, Anandi, is in the other room, but I don't know, because I'm not there. But congratulations on the perfect ACT. So all the people that are here and in the other room, watching live on the Internet, probably wonder what it takes to achieve a perfect 36 on the ACT. Well, Nivee's the type of girl, and like you said, 140 students have achieved this, that can do this. And why? Coming from the top classes that she's in, during the passing period, she walks in, and I was her AP Calculus teacher, so she's getting ready to take calculus and learn whatever I'm going to say that day. And she's in class arguing with her friend about questions that they've seen on Scholastic Bowl competitions and at practice. This is during the break. For Nivee, it's all about learning and trying to gain knowledge and learn more and more and never be satisfied with what she knows. And her ability to learn is also capitalized by her also being in BPA, which I'm sure many students in the room today are involved in BPA. I'm not much immersed in it myself, but what I do know is it trains kids to be very articulate. And Nivee is one of the most articulate young women I've ever met. The way she can explain herself, explain different problem-solving tips to peers, and explain her solutions is top-notch, and I think BPA has a lot to do with that. I asked her, I asked Nivee today, you know, what do you want to be when you grow up? And what are your career aspirations? And she didn't know, but she started to, you know, say a bunch of options that she's thought of: biomechanics, economics, medical field. She also said that she might want to be a writer, which, she's a writer for our school newspaper, great articles. I've read a couple myself, none about me, but I've read a couple myself. And hopefully, you know, if she does decide to become a writer, she sells some books, so Mr. Krishnan, you don't have to support her longer than you want to, but, you know, she's definitely capable to be a writer. And she's also on the debate team, which I've heard her debate Scholastic Bowl topics with her friends. And I know if my wife had her debate skills, I'd be in a lot of trouble. So good for her. And with all how good she is at math, and that's really what personally her work that I've seen, and she's one of our top math students in our school, at Conant High School. She joined math team as a junior, her first year. And the reason why she did that is because she wants harder math problems. She wants to learn how to solve them. She wants to be exposed to the tough problem solving and to keep, you know, expanding her knowledge in every topic that Conant High School and the world can offer. And one of the most impressive things that I know about Nivee is that she is involved with an organization we have at Conant High School called RISE, which is an organization that empowers young female leaders to get involved in the community and be leaders within our school. And she is one of the top-notch young women in our school that is an incredible leader. And our principal here tonight, I'm sure, will tap her, because she's only a junior now. We have a whole two years left with Nivee to be one of our, you know, top leaders at Conant High School. So congratulations, Nivee, well deserved. One last thing, Dr. Small, because, you know, I don't come to these very often. I do, I do want to, I am the head baseball coach at Conant High School. I do want to publicly thank the administration, the Board of Ed, the district building and grounds, our principal, Julie Novak, Mark Langer, John Kane, and the maintenance department at Conant High School for their work on completing that baseball field. It's fantastic. So thank you.
Board, if I may, I believe one of our National Merit students may have walked in late. I don't know. We have someone at the top. Can you tell us who you are? Natalia Gorecki. Congratulations. She's also one of our National Merit Scholars.
Congratulations to all the students we recognize this evening. We are now going to begin the business portion of the meeting. If you would like, you may leave now, or if you would like to stay for the remainder of the meeting, I ask you to exit the auditorium and proceed to the media center to watch the rest of the meeting via Zoom. Due to the regulations on the number of people in one area, we need to allow those who are making public comments the opportunity to enter the auditorium. Thank you and enjoy the remainder of your evening. Thank you. Ready? Oh. Thanks, Kathy. Now we're ready. Okay. Welcome, everybody. Next portion of our meeting will be public comments. According to Phase 4 guidelines issued by the State of Illinois, no more than 50 individuals may be gathered together in a specific location at one time. The Board of Education meeting is being held this evening in the auditorium at Hoffman Estates High School with a maximum of 50 individuals. The board meeting also will be simulcast in classrooms near the auditorium to accommodate any additional guests beyond the auditorium capacity. The Board of Education meeting is also being conducted via an electronic video conferencing application known as Zoom. Tonight, public comments will be in person and via Zoom. Individuals who wanted to address the board via in-person or Zoom were asked to sign up today between the hours of 4:30 PM and 6:30 PM. Individuals were asked to indicate if they wanted to address the Board of Education in person or via Zoom. If more than 20 people completed the link to address the Board of Education, a random system was used to select and order 30 names. Since public comments is to be heard for a maximum of one hour, not all 30 people may have a chance to address the board. A list of individuals who will address the board and the order of the individuals addressing the board was posted on the Zoom meeting screen at 7:15 PM. Each person who addresses the board will have a maximum of five minutes to speak. You will be told when you have one minute remaining, though you may not hear that if you are speaking via Zoom. Public comment will be heard for a maximum of one hour. I will call each person's name when it is their time to address the board. If you are in person, please come to the podium and state your name for the record. Though not required, you may state if you are a resident of the district. If you are addressing the board via Zoom, your microphone will be turned on after I call your name. Again, please state your name for the record and, if you wish, indicate if you are a resident of the district. When you are finished, your microphone will be turned off. Speakers should keep their masks on when addressing the board at the podium. Any individual's unused time or place in order may not be deferred to another individual. Our first person tonight is Kristen Steele.
Good evening. I'm Kristen Steele. I have a daughter here at Hoffman Estates, and I'm actually two in District 54. It feels like since the last time we were here in this auditorium, not too much has changed. We have filled out a survey. The students are anxiously awaiting not only going back to school in person, but also a return to sports for winter as well. I know there have been hundreds of emails written to the board and Dr. Small, all with the focus, I am sure, of how are we going to get our kids back to school? As a taxpayer, excuse me, as a taxpayer and parent of a student in D-211, I would like to also make mention on how the district is not at all meeting the mission of D-211. I've brought this up prior in emails without much response, and if anyone's not familiar with the mission of D-211, it is as follows. Township High School District 211 serves the educational needs of the community, inspiring all students to successfully contribute to the world. One can easily argue that our children's educational needs are not at all being sufficiently met via Zoom learning. This is not to be construed at all, as the teachers are not doing a good job. This is simply a statement that our students' educational needs are not being met with remote learning. Meeting this mission statement in normal times is a collaborative process with several people that need to come together to make very important decisions. Even in the best of times, I understand that can be difficult. It is even tougher and difficult times, and also when that mission resides in the hands of one person. The process becomes disjointed and non-collaborative. It also seems that other states have taken into account their mission and putting the students first and acting when things are not going right. While I understand that things look different in every state, I would like to bring up what is going on in Texas. In school districts responsible for over 32,000 students, they have discontinued all remote learning. These districts have paid attention to the pass/fail rate, the attendance rate, students' mental health, and several of their metrics, and found that remote learning was the catalyst to these disheartening statistics. They saw and paid attention to these metrics that matter. Same with Florida, Oklahoma, and many other states. So I ask, why can't we do that? A response of, well, it is all IDPH and the governor, will not do, because an answer like that would take us on a whole other trajectory. I know you all know that the mental health of our students, youth in general all over the nation, is suffering. Suicides have risen. As a matter of fact, we as a district have unfortunately been impacted by this. And I have to point out, asking students to reach out, to find a Zoom link or a forum online, or to ask for help or schedule a virtual appointment is not how things should be. This is not good enough. Saying that kids can come in for afternoon class time is not good enough. There is so much data telling us that kids need to be in school, and quite frankly, they should be in school without feeling like they are walking into a nuclear bomb area. Again, other states and other districts have made it work. Private schools have made it work. Without bumps, no. But they make it work, they get over the hurdle, and they move on. We have enough data and time under our belts to stop thinking of the what-ifs and focus on the how-can-we's. In closing, I think one of the big disconnects is we, as parents and the supporters of being in school, keep acting like the burden of proof is on us. And truthfully, it isn't. The burden of proof is on the administrators, the school board, to justify their position to stay closed. And to date, this has not been done. Strategies to go back to school should be viewed through the lens of, how can we get this done? What can we do better?
You have one minute.
How can we make this work to have our students in class? It is your job as a school board and an administration to uphold the mission statement of D-211. Also, it is all of our jobs to ensure the safety, well-being, and proper development of our children, and we must resolve to do that more than ever moving forward. Thank you.
Sophia Steele.
Good evening. My name is Sophia Steele. I'm a junior at Hoffman Estates High School, and I'm very involved with the school and community here in Hoffman. I am in student council, a part of best buddies, varsity golf, varsity dance, varsity softball, haquettes, peer jury for the Hoffman Estates Police Department, work for Moretti's, volunteer at Gigi's Playhouse, work for NWSRA, and much more. I spoke three weeks ago, not prepared and not intending to speak. I am back today, speaking for myself and many other students that cannot attend today. I stand here today, still disappointed and extremely frustrated. I want to ask why. Why does it seem like we are one of the very few districts who are stranded, isolated, and lost? Why are all my friends able to attend private school and, believe it or not, still be alive? Why is school all of a sudden an option now? Three weeks ago, I thought I was the only one who thought online school wasn't working for them, but then I started reaching out to some of my other peers and got their perspective. Here are some feedback or quotes that are directly from some students. "Online school is so draining, it's so unorganized, it's impossible to focus. We just sit there and stare at a screen and then expect there to sit longer and continue to do homework. Nobody has a clue with what's going on. I've lost all motivation, and my GPA is as low as it's ever been. If you are in school, please be extremely grateful." Another student states, "As each day goes on, my level of motivation decreases and frustration increases. Since we aren't being held accountable for attending school, we practically get away with anything. I don't want to get up in the mornings, I don't want to log into school, and I simply am done. Now, not only is school frustrating, but so are sports. I was extremely grateful to be able to have my season this year, as I play golf. Last year, I qualified for sectionals as a sophomore, which is a big accomplishment. I worked extremely hard this summer and fall season, only to be told two weeks before sectionals that it wasn't happening. I went home very upset, only to wake up the next day and be told sectionals were back on. How does this make any sense? One day it's okay, the next day it's not, one day it isn't okay, the next day it is. Why do we have to keep living every day as students with so many changes? Is this really because of COVID? I don't think so. Along with school and sports going completely downhill, we can now add mental health to this. Two weeks ago, on Friday, October 2nd, at 12:02 in the afternoon, we lost a beautiful soul here on earth. This student would have been in school with his friends and end the day with soccer. Now, each and every one of you sitting in front of me would respond with, oh, there are psychologists on call and Zoom and Google forms to fill out for mental needs. Well, I can tell you right now, not one student will ever think to go on a Zoom call or fill out a Google form, because they are mentally unstable. We need to be in school. Students are really falling apart, and as some of them being my friends, again, you are asking us to sit at home by ourselves and pay attention to a screen. Some students are at home by themselves and now trying things they should not even be trying, because they are curious and bored. Students are FaceTiming, sharing answers, and learning absolutely nothing. Again, this wouldn't be happening if we were in school. Teachers, administrators, board members, and superintendent, you continue to ask us to stay home and be hopeful, that we will be going back to school again, that we will play sports soon. We are told to stay home, be safe, and be hopeful and protect others. Hopeful for what? Just to get more emails saying we can go back to school and sports? And then a week before, be told we can't? And just keep going on the virtual thing because it's working? Yes, our grades may look good, but students are doing anything they can to get answers and make sure grades are good, and there simply isn't any other choice but to go to school and play sports. Thank you.
Joyce Slavic.
Hi, my name is Joyce Slavic. I live here in the district. I'm the parent of two high school students, a freshman and a senior at Fremd High School. I'm here to request that the board vote to support Resolution 2 related to gun storage legislation at the Illinois Association of School Boards Delegate Assembly. The resolution simply resolves that the IASB support and advocate for legislation to strengthen child safety gun storage laws. It suggests increasing the age from 14 to 18 in homes that have firearms to keep those firearms locked and inaccessible. Research shows that strong child access prevention laws decrease unintentional shootings, suicides, and school shootings. Approximately 80% of guns used in school shootings by shooters under 18 were taken from home or homes of friends and relatives. 25% of gun owners report storing their guns in unlocked locations, and 4.6 million minors live in homes with loaded unlocked firearms. Children are impulsive, and giving them the means to harm themselves or others in the community is not acceptable. Suicide attempts with firearms are almost always lethal, while most people who have attempted suicide do not attempt it again. Sadly, our local districts are no stranger to the horrific pain of suicides or shootings, as the two previous speakers mentioned. If we're fine that we traumatize our children with terrifying lockdown drills, but we refuse to limit the possibility of an actual shooting or suicide, we are failing our children in the worst possible way. The March for Our Lives movement was started by kids who were victimized by a school shooter. Here in Schaumburg, we had a massive March for Our Lives event just two years ago, in which kids themselves begged adults to be responsible and protect their lives. We must not continue to fail our children. This is not even a request to decrease the types of firearms. It merely requires that firearms that people keep in homes with children do so responsibly and lock those weapons up. Let's not fail our children on this simple task. If lockdown drills are in the purview of school boards, so must be protecting children from gun deaths. There are simply no excuses to ignore this resolution. That would be unacceptable. That would be unconscionable and cowardly. Please vote yes on Resolution 2 for gun safety at this year's IASB Delegate Assembly in November. Thank you and be safe.
Jim McGrath.
My name is Jim McGrath. I am a resident of Barrington. I'm here to talk about something that affects every school, every school district in Illinois. I am here representing the Illinois League of Women Voters as the Gun Violence Prevention Issue Specialist for the whole state. I'm here to ask the board to vote yes, or vote to approve Resolution 2 at the 2020 meeting. The resolution's been proposed by Glen Ellen and Carol Stream School Districts. This resolution would align Illinois Child Safe Gun Storage Laws with the laws covering minimum age to purchase guns. Current law in Illinois covering child safe gun storage applies only when a person is under the age of 14, who may have access to firearms. Minimum age to purchase a firearm is 18. The law would apply only to the gun owner, not the child. School shooters are typically current or former students between the ages of 13 and 21, with the majority being 14, 15, 16, and 17 years old. So the current law doesn't really apply to the majority of school shooters. Reference the chart that I hope you all got a hand on. There's a chart in there that shows you the majority of school shooters and their ages. The Resolutions Committee voted a do not approve disposition for Resolution 2. The reasons given were that the IASB didn't have legislative resources to support this, and the IASB typically only deals with issues within the school district. A school shooter is within the district. A school shooter's in the school. Resolution 2 is a proposal to close this gap between the gun laws and the safe storage laws. Safe gun storage laws apply to the gun owner. It is a law to be enforced, it is not a law to be enforced on kids. Let's save not only the lives of innocent students in the school, but also the life of that potential shooter. If he can't have a gun, he won't become a shooter. The text of Resolution 2 is included at the end of the handout. Gun violence prevention groups throughout the state will be working to implement this change from 14 to 18 during the next legislative session. Support of the IASB for this work would be extremely beneficial. Your endorsement would be very helpful to groups like the Moms, League of Women Voters, and other groups for gun violence prevention. So your vote to approve would be very much appreciated. Please vote to approve Resolution 2. Thank you.
Varshini Ramanathan. Varshini Ramanathan. Can we tell if they're still available via Zoom?
They're still on the system. They're just not responding.
Varshini Ramanathan. You're next for the public comments, if you wish. Okay. Anusha Thotakura. Anusha Thotakura, you're next for the public comments. Last call for Anusha Thotakura. All right. Stacy Gale.
Hello, I'm Stacy Gale. I'm a resident of Hoffman Estates, with a student at Schaumburg High School. I've read your update in the agenda, and I see the multiple metrics regarding COVID-19. But I still fail to see any reference to the mental health metrics you are monitoring. Since the last meeting in September, there have been three more suicides in the communities served by D-211, for those under 60. A 48-year-old male, a 26-year-old male, and a 14-year-old male. The 14-year-old male died the morning of October 2nd. He should have been in school. Since the last meeting in September, zero, I repeat, zero people under the age of 60 have died of COVID-19. The number of deaths due to suicide are now 158% those of COVID-19 for those in our communities under the age of 60. Help me understand your priorities. Eliminating an illness that has a survival rate of 99.997%? Or saving kids' lives? When you provide your update tonight, would you please include what mental health metrics the district is considering? If Dr. Small determines my request as apparent is insignificant, I hope at least one board member will ask what metrics the district is monitoring, considering the devastating impact the continued government mandated isolation is having on our children and in our communities. I've listened to the board discuss at length the need to address the inequity gap. Yet, you continue to make decisions that widen it. What measures are you currently taking to address the increasing gap? At the last board meeting, Dr. Small stated the attendance rate was 93 to 95%. That may be true for the district as a whole, but it is not the case for Palatine High School. The attendance rate for low-income students at Palatine High School is about 84%. The attendance rate for IEP students is about 80. These are significantly less than the 93 to 95% rates cited by Dr. Small. It is not the difference, I'm sorry. It's time to stop giving generalized numbers and start looking at detail to those who are most at risk. The following is some information received as a result of a D-211 FOIA request. When comparing the attendance gap between the schools with the greatest number of low-income students, Palatine High School, and the least number of low-income students, Friend High School, I made the following observations. The attendance gap for the overall population and low-income population is 10%. The gap for IEP students is 15%.
You have one minute left.
Another significant observation is that the attendance gap between the overall population and the low-income population at Friend more than doubled in less than a month. The downward trend should be of great concern to everyone. It's time you stop giving lip service to caring about the inequity gap and start taking actions to shrink it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who is in the auditorium, who is not on our list, who would like an opportunity to address the board? If so, if you could just raise your hand. Okay, that will conclude the public comment portion of our meeting. The next item on our agenda is presentations. Tonight, we have a presentation on the 2020 tax levy. Dr. Small, if you'd like to make any opening remarks.
I will, as we're preparing the screen for the presentation. At the October 1 Budget and Finance Meeting, foundational levy information, long-term forecasts, and scenarios surrounding the receipt of the money from the 62-acre land sale were presented. At that time, the extension due date for tax bills had passed, and we were waiting for approximately $15 million in anticipated taxes. As you will hear tonight, the budgeted 97.3% of the 2019 levy has now been received. This is still 2% short of the typical collections and represents 5.4 million less than a typical year. The land sale proceeds of approximately 17 million have not been received, and action on this closing will come before the board tonight. Depending on the action of the board tonight, it is still expected revenue, but it is not yet in hand. The long-range financial forecast will also be presented tonight with the most current financial assumptions. The levy amount, which needs to be determined by November 12, will represent the majority of the FY22's financial revenue, but will also directly impact each year of the long-range financial forecast. Therefore, in tonight's presentation, the projected impact on future years is presented based on the decisions of the levy amount. These long-range financial forecasts are based on the known 2019 CPI and the estimated CPIs of the future. In mid-January of 2020, CPI will be released, and at that time, our long-range financial forecast becomes more accurate. As our reserve amounts get closer to the 33% minimum, it is important to see how immediate decisions potentially affect the future stability of the district, to continue to offer quality programs as expected and capital project as planned without debt. Tonight's levy amount recommendation will include the levy limitation of 2.3% plus new property growth of .43%. There will be an additional recommendation that the board consider a $2 million abatement in January, with a final decision made by March dependent upon the 2020 CPI, receipts of the land revenue, and accounting for additional 2019 levy revenue. This recommendation is based on these three variables, which brings the levy percentage increase down to 1.88%, which is below the 2.3 tax cap of the 2020 levy without 2020 new property growth. The timing of this recommendation and abatement are centered on the following. An abatement filed in March will have the same benefit to taxpayers if it was approved in December. There is no one-time use of the land sale money, but it is used as the abatement recommendation. There are three variables that will be finalized in January. First, the 2020 CPI, which is currently projected at 1.0% will be final, and long-range financials will be more accurate. Second, the planned revenue of the land will be received. Third, if any additional 2019 tax revenue is received, that additional unbudgeted revenue will be added to the financial projections. It is typical that some revenue is received after the due date. Lauren Hummel, Chief Operating Officer, and Barb Peterson, Controller and Treasurer, will present the details behind this recommendation.
Thank you, and good evening. We are pleased to be able to continue our discussion tonight on the 2020 tax levy. Tonight's presentation will include items of follow-up that were discussed at the October Budget and Finance Meeting, our 2020 levy recommendation, and our long-range financial Real estate taxes are by far the district's greatest source of revenue, making up 86% of our revenue for the current budget year. For this reason, the levy is a critical process to ensure that the district maintains adequate revenue to sustain our operations both in the short and long term. For the current year, the property tax revenue budget is calculated off of the 2019 levy that was approved last December. The sequence and relationship between CPI, the levy, and the budget includes variables that span several years and warrants review prior to the levy process. For the 2020 levy, the following holds true. The 2019 CPI is used in setting the limit for the 2020 levy, which is then used in developing the 2021-2022 budget. The sequence of years, including 19, 20, 21, and 22, is a helpful tool in identifying the variables used when establishing the amount of the upcoming 2020 levy. With an understanding that the 2019 CPI sets the 2020 levy limit and the 21-22 budget, this diagram provides further description on the relationship between the levy and the budget. The 2020 levy that will be approved this December will have tax bills that will be distributed in two installments next calendar year. The first installment will be issued in March, or due in March, excuse me, and is calculated using the 2019 information. It is calculated as 55% of the prior year levy amount because the county has not yet calculated the new tax rates. Therefore, regardless of the amount that is approved for the 2020 levy, the spring tax bills will be calculated the same. For this reason, the 2019 levy is what drives this amount for the current year's budget. The second installment tax bills against the 2020 levy will be due in the fall of '21 and are calculated as the balance of the 2020 levy amount using the actual tax rates. The county clerk takes the amount of the approved levy and adjusts the tax bill for the fall by the amount that was paid in the spring, using the actual amount that was approved for the levy, and again, using the actual tax rates. This then drives the budget for the following fiscal year, the 21-22 fiscal year. In Cook County, we're subject to the Property Tax Extension Limitation Law, also known as the Tax Cap, and abbreviated, excuse me, the Tax Cap, and abbreviated as PTEL. All of Cook County is subject to this law, as well as many other counties across the state. What this law says is this. We can only increase our levy from the prior year's amount by a percent of last year's CPI plus that of new property growth. CPI is a measure of the increase in cost of goods and services, and therefore is used as a measure of inflation by which taxing bodies may increase their revenue. The 2019 CPI amount of 2.3% will be used as the limiting factor for the 2020 levy. So for the next year, for existing property owners, the maximum amount that we can increase the levy is 2.3% over the prior year amount. Another limitation under the tax cap is the basis or foundation level for the increase of the following year's levy amount. Most commonly, the prior year levy amount establishes the baseline by which the following year may increase. However, if the levy decreases below the prior year amount, the highest of the last three levy amounts becomes a new baseline. If you pass a levy amount that is less than PTEL limit but more than the prior year, we cannot go back and raise our foundation level back to what it had been under the PTEL New property growth accounts for tax revenue attributed to new properties added to the tax rolls. New property may include things such as new housing developments, a recently occupied office space that was previously taxed as vacant, or the new valuation attributed to the expiration of a TIF district. Under the tax cap, new property growth is levied outside of the limit of CPI, but the rate of the new property is specific to those properties and does not increase the levy to the existing property owner. On average, the district receives approximately .4% in new property growth each year. For the current year, the rand and TIF in Palatine is expiring, and an additional 300ths of a percent in new property will be added to new property growth, and is reflected in the incremental growth in EAV over the past 23 years of the TIF. Under PTEL, the district and all other taxing bodies in Cook County are subject to a limitation in the amount allowed to be levy. For 2020 levy, the PTEL limitation is equal to the rate of 2.3% plus .43% attributed to new property. Taxing bodies may levy beyond this limitation for the purpose of repaying outstanding bonded debt. However, District 11 has no debt and therefore is subject only to the levy limitation that's established under PTEL. Under PTEL, the 2020 levy limitation is $241.7 million. Of this amount, $1 million is attributed to new property owners and is only allowed to be captured as new revenue during the 2020 levy year. Each year, the approved levy amount sets the baseline by which the increase for the following year may take place. As I've mentioned, a taxing body may not recapture revenue that is not levied to the allowable amount under PTEL in future years. It is common that we receive questions pertaining to how the district levy impacts local property tax bills, and specifically, why is it common for property tax bills to change at a rate that's disproportionate from the amount that's limited under the tax cap, or oftentimes even change... from the amount that's limited under the tax cap or oftentimes even different from that of one's neighbor? There are five factors that are used in calculating each property tax bill. Of the five components, only the tax rate is determined in part by the local taxing body. The remaining four factors, including property value, property assessment level, the Cook County equalization factor, and property tax exemptions, are controlled by outside agencies. Additional information on all of these factors is included in the October 1st Budget and Finance presentation should you wish to receive additional information on those factors. While the district files for a specific levy amount each year, it does not receive the full amount that is requested. In a typical year, the district collects about ninety-nine point three percent of the amount that's levied in the first year and then continues to lose this money against each levy year over several years into the future attributed to property tax refunds. The remaining point seven percent in taxes levied are not collected due typically to refunds or unpaid taxes. When presenting the budget, we shared with the board that we anticipate a less favorable rate of collections this year due to the health pandemic. Predictions for Cook County varied widely by area as far as the amount of tax collections that would be received, and for District 211, we budgeted collections of ninety-seven point three percent. The anticipated decrease in tax collections for the current year accounts for a loss of five-point-four million dollars compared to collections that would have been received in a typical year. During the October 1st Budget and Finance Committee meeting, we presented information sharing that we were behind in our collections relative to budget due to the delayed deadline for property tax bills. We've made up the shortfall compared to our budget and are currently right on budget for our 2019 levy collections. While it is still likely that we will have some collections and also refunds that are issued against the 2019 levy, we anticipate remaining on budget or slightly favorable to budget plan. However, it is not expected that we will achieve collection rates at levels that are compared to a normal year. We anticipate having an account of all collections for twenty nineteen, for the 2019 levy by the end of this calendar year. This chart should look familiar to you as it represents the amount of property tax refunds that are issued against the district's property tax collections each year. As refunds are issued by the Property Tax Appeal Board, the district loses this money off the top of its collections. Because the refunds are issued after tax bills are generated, the total levy amount is not redistributed among the remaining taxpayers, but again, comes directly out of taxing body collections. Over the past nine years, the district has averaged refunds in excess of six-point-four million dollars with amounts higher than this over the past three years. These refunds are reflected in the district's budget and they are represented in the property tax revenue line item.
A question rose at the last Budget and Finance Committee meeting about the financial impact to the district if we were to spend the entire land sale proceeds of seventeen point eight million dollars or abate this entire amount from a tax levy. In the first case, we receipt seventeen million dollars in one year and spend seventeen million dollars in future years. This is a wash in the financial statements, and over the impacted years, there is no impact to our fund balance. In the second case, we receipt seventeen million dollars in one year and abate seventeen million off a future-year tax levy. This abatement would reduce our levy amount to below the levy of the prior year. In our example here, you can see that the 2020 levy is less than the 2019 levy. The nuance here is what happens the next year in the 2021 levy year. Normally, the levy grows at a rate of CPI off the basis of the prior year. However, when the levy decreases in one year, the levy calculation changes a bit. We're able to look back three years to the highest levy amount for the basis. In our example here, the 2021 levy, PTEL amount, would be calculated using the 2019 levy as a basis. The abatement has caused us to lose the potential levy growth in 2020 and each year thereafter, compounding into the future. In this case, the abatement of seventeen million dollars reduces each future year's levy by over six million dollars through the change in basis. At the bottom of the slide, we show the difference in the fund balance percentages in year 2025 if we spend all the proceeds versus abate all of them. There are two ways we have for a total levy extension to be less than the PTEL amount, and both will have the same impact to taxpayers. First, we can pass a levy for an amount that's lower than PTEL, and we can file this amount with the clerk's office. As a reminder, we need to pass and file this levy by the end of December. Or, we can pass and file a levy in December and then subsequently reduce it by filing a second document with the clerk's office, giving them a specific amount to reduce the final levy calculation by. This is called an abatement, and we have until the end of March to file this abatement. The abatement has several advantages over filing a reduced levy. The biggest is timing. The levy has to be filed by the end of December, and the abatement has to be filed by the end of March. Those additional three months provide us with time to learn critical pieces of information which could influence our final levy decision. First, we will know the final CPI for 2020, as it will be published this January. You'll see in our projection model in a couple of slides later that we estimate this to be one percent. In today's unique world, CPI is even more difficult to predict than usual. What if it's zero? What if it's two percent? Knowing the 2020 CPI is one less variable in the forecast model. Also, by February, March timeframe, we will know our 2019 levy tax collection rate. We will have closed on the land sale. We will know how we were trending against this year's budget. All of these factors will influence the final levy recommendation. The other advantage of the abatement is it allows the clerk's office to calculate the actual PTEL amount before the levy is reduced by the abatement. This will ensure that all new property growth is captured. If we file a reduced levy amount in December, we have probably made some assumption about new property growth which may or may not be correct. At the Budget and Finance Committee meeting, we were asked to provide projection information for a variety of scenarios. This table provides that summary, including where our fund balance percentages end up after five years and what the impact is to the average homeowner. The projection model assumes that we do not spend any of the seventeen million dollars in land sale proceeds. The top line here is the levy at the full estimated PTEL amount of a two-point-seven percent increase and shows we estimate the increased cost to, of the levy to the average taxpayer to be sixty-five dollars for the year. The chart then drops the levy by increments down to the bottom line of a one percent decrease in the levy over last year. In this scenario, the average taxpayer would save ten dollars on their tax bill from the prior year. The last two columns on the right show the ending fund balance percentage for the district after five years. As a reminder, our fund balance policy is a minimum of thirty-three percent in the educational fund individually and the operating funds combined. After reviewing this data and many discussions, we have made a 2020 levy recommendation. Our recommendation is to file the levy at the full PTEL estimated amount and come back in the first quarter of the new calendar year to review an abatement amount. If today's estimates hold true, we recommend an abatement of two million dollars. This would result in an overall increase to taxpayers of one-point-eight-eight percent, or about forty-five dollars for the average homeowner. This recommendation would provide a permanent reduction in our levy basis amount, allowing for year-over-year relief to our taxpayers. Our fund balance percentages would be thirty-three point four percent for the educational fund and thirty-eight point six percent for all funds combined at the end of 2025. The abatement discussion in the January to March timeframe will give us clarity in many areas as previously mentioned. We can update the projection model with the 2020 CPI, which will be released in January. We will have at least six months of current year financial results to see how we are trending against budget. The land sale will have closed. We will have completed collection on the 2019 tax levy, and we can have additional discussions on the use of land sale proceeds if desired. Again, our recommendation now is for a two-million-dollar abatement to be filed by March, but based upon these variables just mentioned, we might increase or decrease this recommendation. Remember that once we file the levy in December, we cannot increase it. However, we have three months to reduce it. We recommend waiting to file an abatement until more accurate and current financial information is available. As I mentioned earlier this one time, abatement has a permanent impact to our levy basis and provides year-over-year tax relief to taxpayers. Within the line labeled levy per PTEL, we see the levy amount by year. The line below it shows the levy if we abate two million dollars just in this tax year, then pick back up next year with the levy at the PTEL amount. You can see this two million dollars is not just a difference in the year of abatement, but each year thereafter, increasing with compounding growth of CPI. Within nine years, the community would recognize the full value of the land sale proceeds through tax relief. When considering any levy scenario, it is critical that we consider the district's long-range financial position as any change in the levy amount in one year will have a compounding impact into the future years. This top projection assumes the 2020 levy at the PTEL amount of two-point-three percent plus new property growth, which first impacts the district financially in 2022. This top projection assumes no abatement. CPI of one percent is assumed for this current calendar year and a five-year average of one-point-nine percent in the remaining years. Expenditures aligned with contractual salary costs and current trends. You will note that in the current year, we have budgeted receipt of seventeen million dollars from the sale of the sixty-acre property, and we assume that we retain these funds and do not spend any on capital. In the bottom portion of the slide, we assume our levy recommendation, including the two-million-dollar abatement. Fund balance percentages are circled in each section. Both show a slow decline in fund balance, but percentages stay above the minimum board policy of thirty-three percent. We were asked to provide five years of history on our fund balance percentages, which are charted here. We have added in our projected next five years of fund balances under our levy recommendation scenario, including the two-million-dollar abatement. Through funding our capital needs internally, as well as making additional payments to IMRF to reduce our pension liability, we have reduced our fund balance percentage by fifteen percentage points in just four years. The levy recommendation will decline, will result in declining fund balance percentages as just illustrated, but will still allow the district to maintain its quality educational programs, continue our long history of financial stability for our community, students, employees, and board, continue to fund our capital improvements without debt. This is accomplished with a levy amount that translates to four dollars per month increase to the average homeowner. This chart compares our operating cost per pupil to the same cost at other surrounding high school districts. We did update this chart from the one shown at the Budget and Finance Committee meeting with new information released from the school report cards and additional color county high school districts as requested. The bars are now color-coded by county. As you can see, we have among the lowest operating cost around. This does not mean the quality of our educational is lower. It does mean that we can and do achieve the same results at less expense, operating efficiently and responsibly. This list of projects represents the remaining incomplete facility improvements that were identified as part of our strategic plan. We plan to fund these projects over the next years through our annual operating budgets and reserves. The levy amount that we recommend continues funding our instructional programs while also maintaining our district's facilities all debt-free.
The truth in taxation law requires that we hold a public hearing if we plan to levy an amount that is greater than one-hundred-and-five percent over last year's levy. Our levy recommendation is less than a five percent increase. However, in the interest of financial transparency for our community, we plan to again, hold a public hearing on the levy at the December meeting as we have done in prior years. This will require that we determine the amount of the levy twenty days prior to its adoption and place a notice of hearing in a paper of general circulation. Following tonight's meeting, we have held the date of November fifth for another Budget and Finance meeting should there be desire to further discuss the levy. At the November Board meeting, the board will set the amount of the 2020 levy. Following the notice of public hearing, the board will adopt the levy at the December Board meeting, and it must be filed by, with Cook County by no later than December twenty-ninth. From January through March, we will continue reviewing our financial position and continue discussion on our levy abatement recommendation. The abatement must be filed by the end of March. With that, we'll answer any questions that you may have this evening.
I don't have a question, but I do have a couple of comments and thoughts in regards to it because I know I wasn't able to attend the meeting. I guess, to me, it was really important that the seventeen million dollars that we get from the land sale be something that is used for the schools, for our students. I think that's really important. That's something that's very near and dear to me. I believe that each of our schools does have, I want to say kind of a wish list of things that they would like to do, things that would benefit the students, and I would like to spend more time, you know, really evaluating what each of the schools need and how possibly we could use this money that we have not received yet in order to help the students. I know we're talking about the abatement. You're looking at two million. If I understand it correctly, if we go with the recommended tax levy, the increase for a property owner would be about sixty-five dollars for the year, or if we did it, the two-million abatement would be forty-five dollar increase, if I understood that correctly, which is not a huge difference. And the more I kept thinking about this is, over the last number of years with our working cash bonds, we were able to do abatements, and we did save the community a great deal of money. We saved the taxpayers. And also, as I'm looking at this, a lot of our students, they live in apartments. So we have a good number of students that live in apartments. They're not going to get any benefit from this because the rents keep going up. So I'm really concerned, how can we best utilize the funds that we have and provide the best that we can for students? I'm not comfortable of doing an abatement. I mean, we can reevaluate that in, in March and take a look at that, as you said, when we have a better understanding. But I believe that we have done what we needed to do over the last number of years. We worked really hard to make certain that we didn't have debt, and I think it's really, really important that we maintain our schools, do what we need to do to keep them in the excellent shape that they are, and to really take a look, what can we offer at each of the schools for our students and to benefit all of the kids? Thank you.
Were you going to say something, Mr. Rosenblum? First of all, I appreciate you actually bringing up the word abate and reduction in taxes. It's been, I've been at this for a year. So I'm encouraged. I'm not quite there yet with, with the plan. And the devil's in the detail. Slide twelve. I don't want to bounce around, but I may have to. Slide twelve, please. I understand that, that it's a two-year look back, so you can go back to the highest one in the last three years. So the taxing, there would be a lower tax in 2020 by, what's that? Thirteen million dollars, and then an increase the next year of another thirteen million dollars. It, that might be confusing to taxpayers, but the rest of the plan that I, as I understand it, the seventeen million dollars would be, would be retained to essentially shore up the reserves to keep it at, at the level that the board asked for, which is, I think, a minimum of thirty-three percent. You know, my view is the seventeen million dollars, the property is owned by the, by the taxpayers, and the seventeen million dollars needs to be returned or benefit the taxpayers. Slide fourteen, please.
Did you say 13? I'm sorry.
Yeah, 14.
14, I apologize.
Now, I'm trying to reconcile slide 14 with slide 18. The, on slide 18, 2025, after all of the CPI assumptions, which are assumptions, the numbers balance, I think 33.4% educational fund balance, in one case, 2 point, with a 2.4 or $2 million abatement, and 33.4 with the $17 million of land proceeds retained. Is this, are the, with the red line, is this mutually exclusive, or is, are both assumptions cumulative? Is it one or the other, or is it both for the bottom, for the bottom bottom line?
It's one or the other.
Okay.
So you're correct in that the bottom half of the slide ties back to that slide 14.
Okay. So the $17 million, in effect, is retained, and over time, I guess it's slide, is slide 22, I think, I think is where it's, where you say that, well, I'm sorry, slide 22 is about capital projects. One of the slides talks about a payback of six years or eight years.
Slide 17?
Yeah. So I mean, or nine years. That's, I think that's reasonable, honestly. Then on slide, slide 22. See, I think what, what we may have to look at are the capital projects to make this work. And they're, so for the November 5th meeting, could you, could you provide an estimated cost of these, these eight projects? I think, so we can see what the numbers are. Each one, on an individual basis. So, yeah, I do, I do think it's a trade-off of when, when the taxpayers benefit from the $17 million immediately or long-term, with balancing the reserves, which I think is, I think 33.4% is adequate. It doesn't need to be 40%. And beyond that, it's going to come down to what kind of capital spending we would do going forward. So we're close. Not there yet, but close.
I did want to quickly reference that we do have a report in the board materials tonight that provides a 10-year facility outlook, and it has the three categories of our capital spending by year, our capital, our life safety, and then our routine maintenance. And it has these projects that are outlined by year with a planned projection over the next several years, fulfilling our 10-year plan, and a total cost by project year. So that, it's not detailed to the project, but I just wanted to make.
Well, honestly, it's easier as a board member to look at it in one place rather than different places. So it would be helpful to have it on the slide. We're close.
Ms. Hummel, is some of that information included in the budget book that we received as well, the breakdowns of some of those capital projects?
It would be included for, in the bound budget book, it's included for the current year's budget, and then it would have last year's actuals. And that would be true for any of our prior budget books as well.
Thank you. I just, I just want to thank you for updating the information and slides this evening from the feedback and requests at the recent finance and budget meeting. So thank you very much for that.
You're welcome.
One of the things you talked about at the Budget and Finance Committee meeting was the concept of having a real increase as opposed to a nominal increase, you know, relative to inflation and the dollars. Can you share some of that tonight?
Are you referencing, and I apologize, are you referencing the, the increase in the 2.7% versus the, with the abatement?
No. So specifically, if a cost of a loaf of bread last year was a dollar, and this year it's a dollar and one penny, we would have a 1% inflationary increase, and everybody would experience that. And if you want to buy the same loaf of bread that you had last year, you got to pay the higher price. So on a relative basis, if your income doesn't also go up by the same 1%, it makes it more difficult for you to afford the same loaf of bread.
Yes, sorry, thank you.
That's okay.
Do you want to give your example that you shared? With the salaries.
Okay. I gave an example at the last meeting about just compounding growth and how the levy basis can be equated to your salary. So I gave an example of what if, for sake of round numbers, your salary was $100,000, and you were expecting a 2% raise, and your boss came in and said, "I can't give you that raise this year, but next year, I will double that and give you a 4% raise. So I'll raise your basis to $104,000 at the end of two years." And you would say, "Well, I would lose that $2,000 this year, but at the end of two years, I'd be caught up to the same basis, and that would be okay." But what if your boss said, "I can't give you a 2% raise this year, and I can never catch you up again." So your basis is always going to be $2,000 behind. So you go to 102 and then to 104, and you would lose that $2,000, not just the first year, but every year. And that's, we're equating that to the change in the levy basis. If we were to abate, we would lose that permanent foundation in the levy. And that's how we would continue to give back to the taxpayers.
I only think that that's important to point out, because over the, just roughly the last 15 years, let's say, we've been subject to the same rules all the time, other than the year the referendum passed. You're subject to inflationary limits. The qualities that the school district offers today are substantially different than they were 15 years ago. Many of the facilities have been updated, the types of programs, the dual-credit courses, the increased AP courses, the increased performance of all the students, the academic performance in all aspects. And it's just something to keep in mind. It's like a reconciliation between what Mrs. Klimkowitz was pointing out, talking about quality aspects of things, and laying that side by side to the quantitative aspect of the financial exercise that we go through most meetings without a complimentary quality reference. And it's difficult to address one without the other, because they are interrelated. Education is not free, and the quality that we continue to expect from schools in all regards, to the expansion of all services and expectations of everybody. People tonight referencing their demand to get back to the quality programs that we have in full as soon as possible, which everyone generally supports. And the district will be forever challenged if it concedes at any point an inflationary increase that all people are subject to. So it's just something to be cautious of.
I appreciate this budget, because I think it strikes a really nice balance, recognizing the context of the community that our schools operate in. I think it respects the quality of education that our families have come to expect from District 211. And I think, at the same time, it respects the position of property owners here in the suburbs that increasingly feel a pinch as expenses continue to go up and wages continue to stagnate, you know, which is a long-term trend, unfortunately, in this country. So I think that this budget pays respect to, in some ways, both of those competing interests, although I often hesitate to accept the premise that those property owners versus the families that attend our schools are adversary, have an adversarial relationship, because our schools provide a tremendous benefit to the property owners in our communities in which they operate and vice versa. I think we're on the same team, although it's not the way most, a lot of people talk sometimes. So I think that this budget respects the position of our schools within that context. It respects the position of families that have come to expect very high-quality facilities, light years beyond what I experienced as a high school student downstate, and at the same time, the economic position of homeowners in the suburbs that have been here for decades and wake up each day in a rapidly changing and stagnating financial landscape. So I do very much appreciate the budget. And from a board's point of view and future board's point of view, you know, it maintains our fund balance, which I think in this current pandemic has a perfect illustration about why those reserves are so important, you know? Because we can sit, and I remember last year, first year as a board member, when we were having these kind of financial discussions, and nobody was alluding to this amount of uncertainty, because none of us saw this coming. And so I think this is kind of a perfect encapsulation of all of the different interests that have to be balanced when creating a budget like this. It respects the fact that we live in an uncertain world. It respects the fact that property owners out here in the suburbs are continually feeling the squeeze, and the fact that our families expect a very high-quality education. So I think it's, it's very well done, and I appreciate, I appreciate the work that went into this.
Thank you for providing this. When we left the Budget and Finance meeting, I know Mr. Rosenblum had a certain set of metrics that he was looking for, and it looks like that may have been incorporated within the abatement. I was kind of expecting to see that somewhere in the presentation without the abatement, but it is what it is at this point. My question is, when we review for the abatement, because it's not a foregone conclusion, and I don't want to assume that we're going to abate, because it simply states that the levy abatement will be reviewed sometime between January and March, under what conditions would the district or administration remove the recommendation to abate a $2 million amount from the levy?
Well, the biggest one, and I don't want to jinx us, but if the land sale did not close, that would be the biggest reason not to abate. I think other variables would probably change our abatement recommendation, such as what the 2020 CPI comes in at. You know, right now, we're estimating 1%. That, that could swing either way. And to say that we wouldn't have a recommendation, abatement recommendation, we could come back with a bigger abatement recommendation, depending on how things trend.
Here, here.
Thank you.
I appreciate what you ladies have done. I think it gives us a lot of thought, at least it gives me a lot of things to think about in terms of the abatement and what we, what we need to look at in the future. I look forward to your next presentation or the next amount of information that you're going to give us, so we can make a decision, at least for November, as well as at the middle of, beginning of the spring. Thank you.
All right. A question, are we going to have the BNF on November 5th, Budget and Finance Committee meeting? Or is that TBD?
I have heard one request, and that's the estimated capital per item. I have not heard any other requests for new additional information. So if there is any.
We are going to have it on the 5th?
I have only heard one request for new information, and that was for the estimated capital per project. Is there any other new information that we did not present that you would like to see?
Do we need to have a Budget and Finance Committee meeting just to have that, or is it adequate for you to have that in advance of the next board meeting?
Oh, that's good. Okay. Yeah, I wasn't clear. It's on the calendar, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, no, we can, I mean, we can decide that right now. If it's adequate to have it for, you know, the next board meeting.
I'm not assisting on the November 5th Budget and Finance Committee. I don't want, I don't need one.
Okay.
I don't see any additional information at this time, you know, but, you know, we'll see what happens with the land sale.
Okay. So, no.
No.
Budget and Finance Committee meeting as of now, but if something comes up, then just put in a request to Dr. Small? Yeah. Okay. So we're done with the levy presentation. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item of business is our consent agenda. We have a suggested motion that the consent agenda be approved as presented. Can someone please move that?
So move.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I will, I will vote for the consent agenda, but I would like a detail of the $27,000, it was plus or minus of what the attorney, the law, our law firm billed the school district for. I don't know what that was for. And along with that, I don't know.
Is that an item that was in, like, the bills for payment or whatever?
Yeah, it's buried like five, you know, it's a whole bunch of, it's around $27,000. And to put it in context, and it doesn't have to be presented at the board meeting, but to put it in context, I'd like, I have, I don't know, I don't know what the contract says with the attorney firm. I'd like to know what's billable beyond what's in the contract, or I don't understand how that, I don't know what those numbers are.
So, Dr. Small, if you needed any clarification on that, you can just follow directly with Mr. Kramer? Is that it? Okay?
Yes.
I'm not disputing the.
No, no, that's okay, just so you get what you want. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye. All right, that will bring us to special reports. First, we have Freedom of Information Act requests. There are no questions here. Our next item is the 2020-2021 school year update. I don't know, Dr. Small, did you want to make some comments?
I do. Since this September board meeting, the metrics defined by the Illinois Department of Public Health have remained in place, and the indicators for suburban Cook County remain in the minimal and moderate transmission rates for all five health metrics. These metrics are updated every Friday afternoon. Though District 211 may have daily contact with the Cook County Department of Public Health for concerns regarding individual students or staff cases or safety protocols, the weekly health metric conversations with the Public Health Department have indicated that 211 is still on target for a hybrid start of October 26th. The details of these metrics are in the board docs attachment. The Cook County Department of Public Health has indicated that should any one metric indicate substantial transmission for suburban Cook County, that looking at the North Cook County region data would be the next step. This is available on the Cook County Department of Health website. The third data layer would include any specific cases of outbreak or spread within District 211 schools. Each positive case in close contact with a positive case is tracked not only by our schools, but also the Cook County Department of Public Health. Since August 24th, there have been 20 of our 2,050 employees across every employee group that have tested positive for COVID. The quarantine times for any employee or student, when they're in person, will follow the IDPH guidelines as tracked by the Cook County Department of Public Health. A dashboard including COVID-positive cases, people exhibiting symptoms, and exclusion from school due to school-related quarantines will be posted on the District 211 website for each of our five school campuses by the beginning of next week at the latest. If a student is within close contact of a positive case at school, the parents will be called by the school nurse. If a student is not within close contact, six feet for 15 minutes, of a positive person at school, but is within the same classroom or bus, the parent will be notified via email. District 211's safety protocols are designed to keep students and staff out of close-contact range. These procedures are already in place for our in-person athletic teams and academic supports. The dashboard will allow the total number of COVID issues within a school to be seen. Should any outbreaks appear to be connected to school, mitigation strategies such as multiple individual quarantines, classroom bus rider, or extracurricular team quarantines... classroom bus rider or extracurricular team quarantines, canceling nonessential events or temporary in-school closures might be some mitigations that would be considered in consultation with the Cook County Department of Public Health. These mitigations will also occur with, for any issues with operational metrics, including PPE, disinfecting supplies, or personnel availability. As seen within a few high schools that have recently opened and as we have experienced in our summer athletic camps, these mitigations have been implemented very quickly, typically within hours of having all information or prior to the next school day to ensure the decreased chance of transmission across larger groups. Our staff has been preparing for the 50% hybrid model and have reviews, reviewed, revised, and balanced the teams of each school across the 3,000 sessions per school by comparing against the maximum class capacity of each individual classroom. This 50% model allows our students to choose to attend in person and to do so in an every-other-week pattern. It prioritizes the groups of the students with IEPs, 504s, and English language learners for in-person options as designated by the ISBE. After follow-up phone calls for almost 2,000 parents, 43% of our students will be participating remotely and 57% will be in person. I know parents and students are eager to know their teams for in-person and those details will be emailed by Monday at the very latest. One of the benefits of our hybrid scenario remains the academic support opportunities for both in-person and remote students. A student who is connecting remotely during the morning sessions for a week can still take a bus after class, come to school for in-person after-school appointments or extracurriculars. I believe it's important to note for students who want to be on campus, for some portion of every day, this is possible, even during the remote learning week via the afternoon 90-minute in-person appointment times. The diligence of our administrators, teachers, and all staff from technology to support services to transportation and food service continue to refine their procedures for the scheduling. This week, our teachers used a portion of the five ISBE-approved remote and blended learning remote planning days to prepare during the afternoons and then tomorrow all day to ensure readiness in the safety protocols, changes in technology and instructional planning, with some students being in person and some students remote, and daily movements throughout the school. Another one is planned as indicated on the attachment for board docs on December 18th and preparations for activities needed by teachers to complete so work can be done over winter break in preparation for the January return. Next week, freshmen will be encouraged to attend school during academic support time to walk through their schedule. Though there will be fewer students in the school, the building itself is still new to many freshmen. Our implementation of morning in-person sessions for multiple special education programs has been phased in and continues with additional full-day connections per week. Our outreach to families of English learners has been successful through individual phone calls to homes to ensure families understand the choices and opportunities available. My sincere gratitude to the openness of all of our 2,000 staff members, from operations and maintenance to technology, support services, food services, student supervisors, transportations, teachers, teachers assistants, student services, and administrators as they prepare each detail to pivot from remote to hybrid and welcome our students back on August 26.
Any questions for Dr. Small here?
Yeah, questions and comments for our previous discussion. Couple of housekeeping things. First of all, I appreciate the detail there. Could you put that in a letter to the board? There's a lot more detail there than what's in the, what's in the agenda item. And I think it's pertinent that we know. So when we have to explain to community members what's going on, we have a pretty, pretty firm grasp. Also, if the, the Illinois Department of Public Health and the ISBEs, you know, the, the metrics, the weekly new case, test positivity, weekly case count, can you put them someplace on the District 211 website and where, and where we are? Because I think that that is probably not understood by the community, you know, where we are. So that, that would, that would be helpful. I mean, it's one thing here, it would be something in big numbers on the main screen where we are in relationship to the, to what the, what the public health department has said. It would be helpful. So it makes it more transparent, more-
You want like a static reference or you want reference to the Illinois Department of Public Health website or a link or?
No, the numbers actually posted as they are in the last, on the, on the last page, where we are.
You want a screenshot of-
Yeah, yeah, where we are now and where we were three weeks ago. Because the numbers are going up and down.
You know, one, one place that might be easy to do that is when we put the dashboard up on the website. Because as an example, District 15 uses a universally viewable, you know, Google, Google forms to do that and it's very easy to hyperlink and put in an image. So that might be a handy place to put that.
Yeah, just as long as it's-
Because it's updated every week, it would have-
Yeah, easy to find.
It would have to be continually updated like our dashboard data. It might just be easier to do all of that in one.
This happens weekly though. Everybody is-
Yeah, it's only updated weekly. I mean, if it's updated in between, you know, that would be, you know, that would be timely too. But you can only deal with the numbers that are out there. Okay, then I, background, on Friday I sent Dr. Small a couple of requests and this second request we'll get to in new business. But it has to do with the ability of a governing body to amend something that has been previously approved rather than revoke and reinstate and rewrite. That takes, depending on when it's introduced, it either takes two-thirds or, or a majority vote to, to amend. The, and what I'm, what I'm referring to is the specific resolution that was voted 7-0 back in July. Number one, it's outdated. Number two, I think some of the circumstances have changed, namely the community concern over the majority of the authority as a decision-maker to lie with the superintendent. I firmly believe that that responsibility rests squarely on the shoulders of the board. We are elected by the community. This is a community action. It's not operations and I think it should be by vote rather than a, a decision by a single individual. So my, my proposal is this. Initially, because, because things are changing so fast and we've gotten reports that, that the number, the COVID numbers are increasing, okay, statewide, we could be going back from a, from a, from a plan which, which may change things to go back to, you know, we're going to hybrid. We may get there. We may get there almost and then the numbers change so rapidly that, that we have to remain in, in remote. Remote is not working. There's no question in my mind. So if initially I thought, because things change so fast, that I would ask for a special board meeting to, to review and vote on the, the amended resolution. But I would be satisfied with waiting until November 10th. I provided Dr. Small with, with a copy of my suggested changes, okay, with, with the understanding that if there is, if there is going to be any changes, that, that that is brought before the board either by telephone or email saying we're, we're going to do this for this reason. I was, I was surprised by the rollback of being fully confident and understanding that we were going to open in a hybrid manner and the way that I found out about it was the level green communication to parents. So I, I think that, I think the communication there needs to be tightened up. So that, that's my proposal. If we could put it on the agenda for, I'm, I'm conflicted, you know, this, this is really a new business item rather than, so if-
I don't understand.
Quite frankly, I'm not sure I understand your request either. This item is on the agenda, but Dr. Small, do you want to respond to any of that? If there's, if you have an understanding or the context of what he has articulated?
Well, I would like to say a couple of things in terms of the mitigated, mitigation strategies that I represented and that some of the other high schools have already experienced. The, those will happen very quickly if they're going to happen. So for example, if one school, one team, one particular extracurricular has to close, they close very quickly. And in the original information you gave me, you were asking for a special board meeting, which needs a 48-hour posting prior to. This moves faster than that and that would make it cumbersome, if not impossible, to make the mitigation strategies that allow us to pivot to remote and then reopen back for those specific groups after the mitigation strategy.
Right. I understand. And that's why I'm modifying what I had sent, sent to you in the email. I would be satisfied with bringing this up as, as a new business item on November 12.
My other concern would be, you referenced the board, understanding what is happening via email or phone call. In the last week of July, I emailed the board every day and called each board member on Saturday before the level green information went out. So you're asking me to do the same thing that I already did in July that you're saying you did not experience?
I did not receive a communication from the administration that we were not going to open in hybrid. I, I learned about it with the level green.
I certainly remember the phone call.
I did too.
And the emails. So-
Well, the communication though, so let's say, it seems to me that ones, we would get communication if something of substance would change.
Right. And that's what the-
You would do that anyway.
That's what the resolution currently says.
Yes, you would do that anyway.
That's correct.
As a normal course of anything. But the communication, I think she's acknowledging, will happen. So that, that piece will happen.
Okay. I mean, that, all that said, the, the resolution is out of date. It needs to be, it needs to be modified.
So rather than modify, Mr. Kramer, are you proposing a new resolution?
No, no, I'm not.
For the next meeting that will change the current situation opposed to amending an amendment, a proposal that was passed, what, two months ago?
This is what I don't understand.
Or three months ago?
No, I'm certain, obviously it was not clear. I'm proposing an amendment to a, to a resolution that was previously adopted. I'm not saying rewrite the whole thing. I'm saying amend what we did in July.
I have a question that maybe might add some clarity. I'm not certain. I want to see us open up on the 26th. I want to see that hybrid schedule taking place. What if, if the percentages go up, what kind of notice do you get and is there any way that we can still, with all the precautions we take, still be able to open?
So the metrics fall into the range of minimal, moderate, and substantial. Minimal and moderate are considered complete green lights, go ahead, no questions asked, as long as your safety procedures are well-maintained and in place. In every conversation we've had with our epidemiologist connection at Cook County, they are very pleased with our safety procedures that we have in place, as we call them for any of our positive cases that we've had with employees or any positive cases we've had on our athletic teams. With that base, when anything goes into substantial of the five metrics, that is in suburban Cook County, what the Cook County Department of Public Health has said to us is the next step is to look at northern Cook, suburban Cook County, which is, has the metrics available via the Cook County Department of Public Health website, not the IDPH website, as well as a conversation with them about any outbreaks, which would be transmissions within the school that are currently have, happening. There hasn't been any indication that one metric would trigger us not to be able to open in my conversations with her. They are concerned with any county-wide metrics such as when the county turns orange and county-wide metrics come into place that then affect the schools, not individual, single metrics that may pop as someone referenced for a week and then drop back down.
And the metrics that, that would turn a county on, I've been following that map very closely, orange, from my understanding, please correct me if, if your understanding is different, reflect like a, a background noise, a community transmission rate, a general background noise that is so high that it puts even our best safety protocols in general to warrant further discussion with a county health person to make sure that schools can, that we can still operate in a hybrid scenario as safely as possible even with our community context. Is that right?
That's correct.
Yeah.
And that would be the information, just that I get at the end of July, that I would be passing to the board to say, these are my conversations. This is my recommendation that we move forward. Okay. But if our area is, and I know they've broken it down into zip codes and that, but if our area is, is doing well and our COVID rate is, is low, but the Illinois Department of Public Health says we, we can't continue, is there any way for us to still continue with a hybrid plan? Or we have to follow- Is the Illinois Department of Public Health suggesting that we not continue?
If, if they were to say that.
Okay. With that, I would be very clear to the board with my information, saying that this is what the IDPH is recommending to us and what happens if we do something different than what the recommendation is. I would make sure that the board understood what decision would be made regarding that. Okay.
And that really is the intention of my proposed changes. I don't want to read the whole thing, but a couple of high points. The original resolution was, was titled Opening Plan Resolution. We've already opened, so I changed it to an Operating Plan Resolution. I, I removed the words opening and the word and. I've, I've changed approved to amended in paragraph one because it would be an amended plan.
Mr. Kramer, it's very difficult for me to follow this when I don't have the same text in front.
Well, okay, I, if, do you still have the copies?
Hmm.
Can, can we distribute those, please?
Is there anything else or are we going to continue on with this?
Well, can I continue from the, from the top here? So I, Ms. Cavill, can you, can you, you have, you have that, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So it, there's some, there's some basic changes here that, that remove the word opening and make it an operating plan. That's in paragraph one. A changing approved to amended. Then in paragraph three, I added, added the verbiage, "Any substantive changes in the plan, including a change from one active learning scenario to another," that's, that's new, "shall be made in consultation with the president and board and then promptly reported to the board, which shall be convened into a special board meeting." That, that probably should be modified into either a special or an emergency board meeting because of the timing. "If no regular board meeting is scheduled before such changes are to be implemented." And then in paragraph four, I've stricken the last sentence in accordance with Board Policy, BFC, the plan and so on, so on, so forth. I think that that, I'm not quite sure why that was even in there other than saying, "This plan supersedes any other policy." So those, those are the changes. I'm not, I'm not asking for a vote tonight. It's, it's not an agenda item, but I'm asking that it be considered November 12.
If I may, the, the discussion again around convening a special board meeting, even an emergency board meeting, that takes time. And when we pivot at a school for a one-day close or a multiple-day close for maybe a 14- or 10-day quarantine, that happens very quickly.
Yep.
And if I may, at the end, I'll address the end. The, you're exactly right. The plan supersedes any policy that may be affected by this. And I will give you a very simple, very simple example. The, there is a board policy that says every student is assigned a locker. We are not assigning- We are not assigning lockers this year, but that is a direct policy, that this plan is different from that policy.
Yeah, again, that's...
But that's what that is for, for any policy changes that don't need to be made because of the plan.
May I ask, who wrote the resolution? How was it drafted?
This came from our attorneys.
Pardon me?
Our attorneys.
Your attorney, yeah, that's obviously, that's what I thought. To mitigate the possibility, and perhaps even the probability, that action will have to be taken immediately, the last sentence of the third paragraph says, "The proposed changes shall however remain in full force and effect until such time as the board acts, unless otherwise required by law." So that gives you the authority to take action now and talk about it later.
So those changes wouldn't be proposed, they'd be the actual changes that are in effect until the board acts for it to be different?
Yeah, the process would be, the administration proposes the changes, at some point in time the board, as quickly as possible, should vote on them, but because some of those proposed changes have to be implemented very quickly, the word, by interjecting the word proposed, that gives you the authority to do what you need to do on a dime.
I'm just confused, because this was originally supposed to be an update about how things are going and the plan, and then when you originally gave this information, you said multiple times that you didn't want to have a protracted discussion about this tonight, but now that's what we're having, and it's totally off-topic about what we were...
Sorry, that's not my doing, Mrs. Cavill, this is not my doing.
I've still got some questions about what we were originally supposed to be talking about. You've also said you don't want to vote on this tonight, but normally we have a discussion like this before a vote, which is why I'm confused about this whole process.
Well, I brought it up with superintendent, the board president was involved, I was told that the best time to bring up this concept was at this point in the meeting. So I'm doing, the board policy says the agenda is set by the superintendent, and I'm following that protocol.
Okay, what was your question that you still have related to this?
Yeah, so my question was in regards to special education students that, you know, have been coming into our buildings, and our special education staff that in many cases require extra protective equipment in order to provide that direct physical support, one-on-one physical support. So I know part of your planning and part of your detailed plan about operations also continually monitors our supplies of personal protective equipment, and I just wanted to check in and see how those particular services were going, how our students are going, how our special education staff are going, and then concurrently how are our sorts of personal protective equipment, you know, that are available to our staff.
We have phased in some of our special education programs, starting with typically an afternoon session for them, moving to then a morning session, and then building to an all-day. That includes a lunch session, which for some of our students, takes a lot more operational complications in terms of making it happen in the best way we can for our students in that situation. Our staff has been great in terms of understanding the training of the PPE, what options they have to wear, because some of our staff members with some of our special education programs are within six feet of the students because of the duties that they are assigned. We did offer for any staff member who was within six feet of a student, the opportunity to wear an N95 mask and go through that fitting process, as defined by OSHA, to make sure that they understood how to wear it and were healthy enough to wear a respirator. And I'll turn over to Lauren to answer the question about our current levels of PPE and our ability to maintain that.
Yes, we review weekly where we are with our PPE levels. We have more than adequate supply to, of anything that can be needed, ranging from disposable masks, we have disposable gloves, hand sanitizer, sanitizing wipes, the disinfectant spray, gowns as required, the N95 masks, so the list goes on. We have various levels, or various setups, I would say, per type of classroom. So for example, in a computer lab where there's shared equipment, there may be different PPE that's available versus in a traditional classroom, but we do review that, and we have several, several week, if not several months, supply depending on what the item is, and for the items that we have a shorter or a smaller amount, they are items that are believed to not go through as quickly, and they also are easily accessible at this point, should we need to replenish them.
Thank you, and then I just wanted to make one last comment. When you mentioned the percentages of, you know, families choosing to either continue with remote learning versus reserving a spot for a hybrid scenario, I believe the percentages that you said were 43% of respondents chose to remain virtual and 57% in-person. I was actually very surprised at those percentages, and I think that that speaks to the fact that 43% of our families that responded chose to continue with virtual learning speaks to the quality of the virtual education that's being provided. So it certainly doesn't work for everybody, it certainly doesn't work for everybody, you know, if this were Hogwarts, like Hermione could handle virtual learning and Ron obviously couldn't, so students need different delivery systems, which is why I'm really excited for the target date of October 26th, and to start offering more in-person learning to those families that chose to reserve a spot.
I have a couple of things. One is, I also think that our quality of education is outstanding, the remote situation is the best we can do right now with what we have. It is not a pleasant experience, it is not a comfortable place for our students, our families, our parents. I do know a particular family who is torn, they have two kids in our school, and one child wants to go back to school, and the other one does not want to go back to school for personal reasons, either environmental or educational or what have you. So I think that it's definitely interesting information, and one that I hope that for those who want to go back to school, that we're able to accommodate in some fashion each and every one of those students and families, for whatever reason, to be the best environment back here in the buildings. As far as the information that Mr. Kramer was discussing tonight, it seems to be a feeling, and Mr. Kramer offered to have it moved to the next board meeting, so it'll be brought up at that time as a future item.
All right, if there's nothing...
No, no, I have something.
Sure, go ahead.
I don't mean to catch you when your head's turned.
No, that's okay.
Regarding the update, Dr. Small, I know that at the beginning of the school year, we were in coordination with District 15 and District 54 and District 211, we all basically made our announcements around the same time as far as going full remote. What has been District 211's coordination with other districts such as 15 and 54 with their return to the classroom? Obviously 15 has done it a significantly amount further ahead, so obviously they're in the northwest suburbs like us, so either they must be in a different metric in some capacity, and with 54 having their start on Monday, what was our coordination efforts with timing, or was there just complete independence on that?
No, I meet weekly with both of those superintendents, and we talk about our plans, what is working, the challenges that are coming forward. Just as a reminder, we did have this discussion at a previous board meeting, the opening of a elementary school classroom versus an opening of a high school are very different. We are opening at 50%. I challenge you to look at any other high school in the area and see if they're opening at 50%. And our administrators have worked diligently to make that happen, to ensure that those that are in person, we can fit them in that classroom, should they come on with 100% attendance. That allows our kids to attend for a full week at a time, as opposed to a day here, and then they wait another four or five days before they get to come back.
Right, and as that was presented in July to the board, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That same point, as presented in July.
Right, okay, fantastic. And then the other comment I have, are we coordinating for families that are in the 15 or 54 with regard to whether they're remote or home, or we have no coordination with that? So if one sibling, for whatever reason, is in school with the hybrid and their sibling in high school is not, or vice versa, we're not following up on that?
So a, like a fifth grader wants to be home and the high schooler wants to be in person? I'm not sure what you're asking me. That would be fine?
I'm just making sure that with some parents, if they're able to coordinate their schedules. I know that that might be some concern there, and I was just curious if we're following up with that, if there are coordinations, I guess.
I'm still not sure exactly what you're asking me. What do you mean, the schedule, whether they get to choose in-person or remote?
Yeah, basically, as some families in the elementary may be choosing for their child to go back to school, and just making sure that they had the same opportunity, I'm guessing we called and followed up, or like you were saying, if we're having a hard time reaching out to a certain population at a school that didn't respond to our survey, or they're not answering the phone, and they're being placed in a remote learning environment because we can't get a response, but they're...
They're actually placed in the opposite, they're placed in person if we didn't get a hold of them.
Okay.
So that we have a seat, should they choose it.
And so we place them in the school, and I just want to make sure that the family isn't relying on an older sibling to care for a younger sibling, or something like that, so that's what I mean with the coordination.
Then that parent would certainly have the option to make them be remote.
Right, I wasn't sure if we were coordinating with the elementary district as far as families and what we're doing with placement.
That would be with individual family.
Okay, and then one last final question. We have our afternoon sessions, and we have our students that'll be coming back into the hybrid model. Will our counselors be available for personal interaction, or will it still be a virtual interaction?
Yes, the counselors are available for the afternoon sessions, we have asked that for the morning sessions, and that is still in place now, that it is only for emergency meetings that that student actually comes out of class, that the meetings take place during the afternoon sessions.
Okay, so...
But they are available for in-person at the hybrid scenario.
Okay, so if they want to do in-person, they have to schedule in the afternoon?
Appointments.
Okay.
Afternoons are still appointments, whether you're choosing to do them in-person or remote.
And so then our counselors in the morning are doing something else?
Yes.
Okay.
Again, the acoustics in here are difficult for me to hear. Did I understand that the parents who did not respond to the survey were contacted in person?
Via phone.
People went out there to knock on the door and say, "What do you want to do?"
No, via phone.
Oh, via phone, okay, so they were contacted. The follow-on to that is, I believe I read initially that the plan was for a parent to make an irrevocable decision as to whether or not their child would be remote or hybrid, is that still the case?
So a parent who has chosen remote through the end of first semester, we do not have a seat for them. A parent who has chosen hybrid and then chooses to keep their child home can do that. We needed the count so that we could do our seat counts for it.
Okay.
So the remote decision was made by the parent and stands through the end of first semester.
So if a parent has said remote, they have to stay remote until the end of the semester?
That's correct.
Okay, if a parent chose hybrid, they can choose to go remote?
Yes.
Can they come back to hybrid?
Yes, because we have a seat for them.
Okay, and then...
It's what, with our balance, I guess part of the piece that you need to understand is, our balance to the sections are to the seat. I mean, we were balancing sections because they were one or two kids that we had to find seats for, that's how tight we are to make a 50% work, but we are making it work.
Okay, then is this topic on the agenda for November 12th, Mr. President? The topic that I brought up to amend?
No.
It is not, we're not, so you, we are not, this topic is not going to be voted upon by the board, it's not going to be discussed on November 12th, is that correct?
Not right now, nobody has made that suggestion.
We're not at that point.
Wait for new business.
Can I do it under new business?
You can make the suggestion right now, if you want.
I'd like to discuss this as a topic at the November 12th board meeting.
Okay, so that's the motion, to add that agenda item. Do we have a second for that?
I'll second that.
Okay, so does everybody understand what the question is? We're going to take this item that he has provided, and Dr. Small has, and it would be then added to the agenda, that's what the board would be directing the superintendent to do, to add this as an agenda item for the next meeting. Is everyone clear? Does anyone have any questions about this or the prospect of doing that? Or anything else you want to know about that?
So it'll be discussion and vote, is that correct?
Well, this item will be on there, but someone will have to make the motion. You know, the majority of our motions come from the superintendent, that is, the superintendent's recommendation, this would not be that, but this will be on the agenda then. So you, in effect, you will be noticed about a potential motion to be made. Any questions about that? Okay, so on the issue of directing the superintendent then to add this item to the agenda for the next meeting?
Okay, part of clarification.
Sure.
Okay, this, first of all, would be discussed before, would be voted on, and if there are changes to the amendment, so be it, really, that's why we have a discussion, okay? And if you have to, if we have to table it for a month, I don't want to do it, to think about it, that's fine, I just want it on the table.
Yeah, that's okay, I think everybody gets that, yeah. We just, the agenda is a sacred piece of the board's business, and we don't take lightly incorporating things into that agenda, the superintendent provides that for us, what the superintendent believes the board needs to opine on, to have the superintendent get the direction to adequately run the district. So we don't take that lightly, adding things to the agenda. So that's all, that's the only point, but everything else you said is right, the board will discuss it and deal with it at the time, okay?
If it gets voted to...
Yeah, after we decide right here, which we haven't voted on yet, but that's all, so, okay? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
No.
Mr. Young?
No.
Ms. Cavill?
No.
Mr. Jambrowski?
Absolutely, yes.
Mr. Lefever?
No. So I believe the motion fails four to three, so just simply this doesn't get added to the agenda for the next meeting. Okay.
May I, just to comment, you know, I know you're trying to wrap this up, I think the most important thing is to getting our students back into school, and I think the administration, we put faith into them, we have a superintendent, and we have an administration that has been working really hard to have the hybrid plan to get things working. I think we do have to put faith into them, because they're here every day, so they know what's going on. We really don't, we rely on the information that we're given, and sometimes if things have to be acted upon quickly, we need to be able to have our superintendent do that and to keep us informed, and I think that that's the important part that we have to have, is that information.
Is that comment directed at anybody in specific, Mrs. Klimkowitz?
No, it's just...
Okay, fine, you were looking at me.
I look at everybody.
Let's move on to the next item on our agenda, which is District 211 Equity Team Update. Dr. Small, did you want to make any remarks here?
Briefly, each board meeting, we've brought an update in terms of the District 211 Equity Team. There have been two large group meetings that have occurred with the subgroups either completing or scheduled to meet their second meeting very soon. The summary of the work thus far includes gathering the ideas for the community focus groups and for outreach.
All right, if there are no questions, that'll bring us to our next item, which is the 2020 Summer School Enrollment and Cost Analysis.
If I may, I'd like to thank all of our teachers who worked for us this summer, we had an extremely high amount of District 211 teachers, which helps our programming that we're able to offer. We had over 5,600 students attend our summer school for the academic portion, and almost 3,500 attended either remotely or in-person for our athletic camps. An extremely high number considering the situation, and I think the staff members who were involved in that to make sure those opportunities were still available for our students in the summer.
Thank you, all right, that will bring us to 2020-2021 Free and Reduced Price Meal Eligibility.
If you'll notice on page two of this report, there's been a significant decrease in the district percent... there's been a significant decrease in the district percentage of students that are indicated for our free and reduced-priced meals. Most significantly, this is seen in Palatine, Schaumburg, and Hoffman. There are two potential reasons behind this. One is the USDA extended their waivers to feed all children under 18 for free. This may reduce the incentive for our parents to apply for this eligibility, since it is not needed when all students are receiving their meals for free. And the second piece that may have made this number lower would be in order for fee waivers to occur, the meal application must be filled out. And since the board generously waived fees for this school year, this also may have prompted some families not to continue to fill out the waivers. So I just wanted to draw your attention to it. I do not believe it is a truly accurate number of the amount of families in our district who are, wouldn't typically need free reduced meal eligibility.
Does this have any impact on Title funding?
It does. So our many, if not all of our federal dollars are based upon our Title I funding. I'm sorry, our free and reduced meal applicant percentage, which Title I is definitely a part of. We will continue to try to get more applicants to fill this out, if it's, as they're appropriate for the family. I just wanted to draw your awareness to it.
Can I ask what are some of the ways that we communicate to our families, whether they be eligible or not, of the program? And, and make it as simple as possible for them to enroll in it if they so choose?
Yeah, every, every family in the district receives an email with the application. Applications are all available in the school. They're all made available during the registration process. Any family that comes to our buildings to do walk-in registration is prompted to complete a meal application. Once we, we also, in addition to the meal applications themselves, we have families that we become aware of through the state that automatically qualify due to either their SNAP benefits, TANF, or homeless or Medicaid status. So those are automatically added, and we do not require that they submit a new application. And in this year, and really all years, for the families that do not apply, they do have a 30-day carryover into the current year if they were eligible last year. So as that 30-day window starts to close in, we do make contact. This year, I know the schools were very instrumental in reaching out to each family individually by phone to try and contact them and see if they were interested in filling out the application for the current year.
I wonder if there might be some changes because some people may have been on unemployment, and then there was that extra $600. And I'm not certain if that affected some of the SNAP benefits and things of that nature, which may have caused a decrease here.
I don't know specifically, but it is definitely possible, I would say yes.
So we might see an upswing, you know, in the very near future in regards to this when people have to do the reevaluations for their SNAP benefits, possibly.
Okay, thank you. That will bring us to our update on foreign exchange trips.
Unfortunately, we're unable to extend our foreign exchange trips for the summer due to the pandemic. But our teachers continue to reach out to our partners across different countries to create different opportunities for our students within our classrooms.
Okay, that'll bring us to unfinished business. We have 2020 tax levy information, for which we already had a presentation tonight. Did anybody have anything else to add here? Okay, then, that will bring us to our amendment to the terms and conditions of sale of real property located west of Plum Grove Road and north of Wise Road, Schaumburg, Illinois. Suggested motion is that the Board of Education approve the amendment to the terms and conditions of sale of real property located west of Plum Grove Road and north of Wise Road, Schaumburg, Illinois, as presented. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion here.
This is our, our third amendment, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Roll call.
I, oh, go ahead. Can you, can you count to five before you, before you call roll, please? A question, why, why are we doing this again? Okay, specifically, what's, this is a request by, by Nitti, correct? Why are they requesting?
They are requesting the additional time for closing due to the parties that they are working with requiring additional time to prepare the necessary documents for closing.
So even though they knew that the date was today, they're saying we can't make the date even though they knew the date was set the last time we set the date?
That is correct.
Well, we're kind of between a rock and a hard place in this one. If we say no, what happens? The, the sale closes, or collapses. So I think it's, Nitti should have been here to explain it.
Well, no, this, you know, anytime you're dealing with a real estate development, this is nothing new. I mean, I've done, I've done several developments where closings can take up to six months to even a year when somebody presents some sort of issue that has to be researched out. This is nothing new. I wouldn't be surprised if this is going to get extended ethical to the end of the year. It wouldn't surprise me at all.
It's frustrating, I agree, it's frustrating.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Nay.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Lefever?
Aye. All right, new business is next. We have tenure facilities and capital improvement plan update. Dr. Small, do you want to make any comments? Or if, if not, does anybody have any questions for Dr. Small? Okay, that will bring us to National School Boards Association National Connection Fees. We have a suggested motion that the Board of Education approve the national connection fees of the National School Boards Association for the period of January 1, 2021 through December 31, 2021. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
No.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Nay.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Lefever?
Aye. All right, that will bring us to our proposed new policy, Title IX Sexual Harassment Grievance Policy. This is a new policy, and this is our first time to see this tonight. Any questions?
It's understood that this is just one of many iterations that we're going to see.
There will be many additional policy changes based on this that's coming forward.
Okay, so this, this will set a precedent for other policies.
That's correct.
Okay, if there are no other questions here. Next item of business is the sale of surplus school property. We have a suggested motion that the Board of Education authorize the sale of used surplus vehicles by way of public sealed bid, public auction site, or company trade-in. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Lefever?
Aye. Next item of business is the Illinois Association of School Boards Resolutions 2020. And, Mr. Rosenbloom?
Thank you. The Illinois Association of School Boards, so this was also in your information packet for today's meeting, and shared with the community. The Illinois Association of School Boards Delegate Assembly is the policymaking body of the IASB. The Delegate Assembly is comprised of one voting delegate from each member district. Board Vice President Anna Klimkowitz serves as a member of the 2020 Resolutions Committee. With the cancellation of the 2020 Joint Annual Conference of the Illinois Association, Association of School Boards, Illinois Association of School Administrators, and Illinois Association of School Business Officials, the Delegate Assembly of IASB will be conducted virtually on Saturday, November 14th. The Delegate Assembly will review, discuss, and vote on proposed resolutions submitted by member districts. I will represent District 211 as the voting voice for the board. The results from the proposed resolutions and amended position statements will guide the IASB's position statements and staff in ongoing legislative efforts. In preparation for this year's Delegate Assembly, I will be attending two meetings where delegates will discuss the proposed resolutions, ask questions on the proposals submitted by IASB member districts, and debate the merits of the proposals. These meetings will be on October 21st and November 5th, both prior to our next board meeting on November 12th. Arguments for or against each proposal must be raised and presented to the IASB and delegates at one of these meetings. Discussions on resolutions will not be held during the Delegate Assembly itself. The Assembly will include the IASB Business Meeting and voting on each resolution. In advance of this evening's meeting, each District 211 Board of Education member received a completed copy of the 2020 Resolutions Committee Report. It was also in the packet that you received when you came to the meeting tonight. This report has also been made available for public access on our District Board Meeting website. Thank you to those who attended our meeting tonight to comment on these resolutions. Your input is valued and appreciated. I am proud and honored to represent our school district at the Delegate Assembly for the third year in a row. As the District 211 representative, I will be voting on behalf of our school board on each resolution. I ask each board member to please review the resolutions and amended position statements in the report, and to please contact me individually and directly by November 4th if you have any questions or concerns on the report or any of the proposals it includes. I also ask the same from our fellow district community members. During our next board meeting on November 12th, I will ask if any board member has a recommendation that differs from the Resolution Committee's proposal recommendation. Otherwise, I will vote on behalf of our board on the resolution as recommended. Are there any questions about that?
So at this point, you don't want any suggestions or recommendations on any of the resolutions?
If you have information to share with me now, I welcome that as well.
No, because I'm, I'm in with, in agreement with resolution, not in agreement with what the IASB, IASB recommended for Resolution Number Two. As a person that's seen a lot of gun violence in my lifetime in, in the community, and not this particular community, I think that we should have tightened our gun controls so that adults keep their, our guns locked up in a more secure situation for, if they have a child that's under 18. And I strongly recommend it.
Thank you for that feedback.
I, I do have a comment being on the Resolutions Committee. And, and I, I thank Ms. Slavik for, for sending us some information, and also for being here to share her, her view. The Resolution Committee supports the concept of, you know, of raising the age to 18. However, the consensus was that maybe this should be legislation, it should be through legislation, not necessarily through the school board. Some of the points they brought up is that the schools really can't enforce this. It's not something that, that we do. And they also said not, in some cases, this may not be an area that schools should step into where boards generally are not involved. In reading this, in listening to Ms. Slavik bringing her position across, maybe instead of it being a resolution, it might be best to present it as a belief statement. Because we have belief statements, we've got 12 of them, they're in the, the back of the book. And when we talk about school safety and a secure environment for all students and staff, maybe it need, can be expanded to include safety at the home for students and somehow or other incorporate that into the gun safety. So maybe a way to, to present it or discuss it, Mr. Rosenbloom, is to see if we can get it added as a belief statement incorporated into one of those. Because then it would cover everything, and it would still, it's, it's important. It's, it's, it's important, and maybe as the one gentleman had presented, they're trying to work with legislators so, to get this, get this changed. The Safe Storage Act is the one that they were looking at, to change from age 14 to under age 18. So I think there's things in the works, but we'd like more support for it.
Comment, a suggestion? I, I actually did read through the list, and there's a lot of them. I mean, like 100 pages, I'm being facetious there. Can, can you perhaps streamline the process and develop a form to send to the superintendent, to send out to the individual board members that we can send back to her, that they can compile and send to you because, because of OMA? Yeah, I, with comments, I mean, I, I, I mean, my position right now is, is to vote present because some of the stuff I agree with and some of it I don't. So it, it might, might be helpful for you to see a tabulation rather than wait on phone calls and emails and that sort of stuff.
Well, the phone calls and feedback would be just if you have a difference of opinion to what the resolution recommendation is. And then at the next meeting, I was going to ask everybody if they had a difference of opinion one way or another. I think Mr. Dombrowski is showing you page four, where it's the, where it has each resolution listed.
Everybody's got one.
Yeah, it's, yeah. And it's also provided electronically in the agenda.
Can we mail that to you?
Absolutely.
Email it to you?
You can, you can hard mail or email it to me, Mr. Kramer, either way you'd like.
Sure.
Yes, I, I want to encourage people to, to give me your feedback because I'm representing you, right? I'm representing this entire body at this, at this Delegate Assembly. So I'm voting on behalf of the entire body. So.
Thank you.
Just, just real quick, because the, the superintendent, we, we do have a summary. And that's also part of our, our agenda here. So it summarizes a little bit more without having to, to read through this. And I know it is lengthy, so maybe that would, would work. It's, it's part of this, this line item here.
Appreciate the suggestion.
Okay, that will bring us to potential topics for future discussion. Is there anything here?
I have a motion. I move that the administration provide a comprehensive presentation with respect to the Deep Equity Program.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Discussion.
The, the Deep Equity Program, is that what you said?
Yes, it's Deep Equity. Okay, the background, the last board meeting, I made a comment about Dr. Gary Howard, and that the material that he has provided to the school district is controversial. I stand by that comment. And I don't want to take anything out of context. I think the board should be aware of what is, what is being used as a curriculum to train the trainers and also with the students in the, in the interest of transparency to the community. Without judgment, and now, my understanding, I was provided copies of the material, the DVD was not in here, but that's, that's a minor point. I, I thought I read an email that said that the signature material was also available for other board members. Was I mistaken in that?
You have to return it so that I can get it to other board members.
Oh, okay, so there's only one copy?
That's correct.
We can't have multiple copies? I mean, do we have other, is this?
They're, they're used, they're, the, if another board member needs them and wants to view them, I can certainly get them. I only start off with one copy to be sent to other members.
Are there other copies available?
I can ask for them. I'm sure Palatine would have some more copies.
Well, so, to, to, to make my point, I'm just going to read, and these are definitely, at, at worst. Well, so to make my point, I'm just going to read, and these are definitely, at worst out of context, but at best perhaps cogent. This is from the manual that's being used to train the trainers and teachers, who are teachers, just some comments here. This is read verbatim from the training material.
So in the section you're unclipping, was that clipped when it was handed to you?
I cannot hear you.
For the section that you just unclipped, was that clipped when it was handed to you? Because there was a section that was not used.
It says it's not, it wasn't part of the program, but it's in the book.
Fair enough, as long as we make it clear it wasn't part of what we used.
Did we tear it out of the book? We didn't remove it physically from the material.
No, but it was not used. So just for some background, the information was provided to me from the principal, and he indicated which materials within the training was actually used and what was not used. And the clipped area was not used, and he specified that.
But it was in, but it is in the training material.
That is correct. It's in the book.
Okay, and people can read it, right? People were free to read it?
I would have to check to see how they handed the book out. I didn't ask that question.
Page 143, white identity orientations, I won't go into the detail. He says there's three types of white identity, fundamentalist, integrationist, and transformational white identity. You can read that at your leisure. This is being read from an essay which is part of the material, I believe it was part of the program. Paragraph four of the essay titled "How We Are White." Paragraph four, "As white educators, we are collectively bound and unavoidably complicit in the arrangements of dominance that has systematically favored our racial group over As I said, controversial. This is the training material which is used by students as part of the program. It's called the, I guess it's called the YES Program, Youth Equity Stewardship. I don't know if this is a classroom thing, the way that it appears to be is it's voluntary in small groups, but I don't know.
Correct, it is not used in the classroom.
But I don't know if the parent's aware that the students are doing this or not. Gathering Two, the topic is social dominance to social justice. And the detail is found in the book. A quote on page 24 by Gary Howard, "Justice in other words, the good of many over the greed of a few." Dynamics of dominance, luxury of ignorance, being unaware of an injustice because you're not affected by it, assumption of righteousness, the belief that a person or group's truth is the truth, lack of privilege, historical and ongoing givings of opportunities, resources, and privileges to one group of people and not the others. I won't belabor the point, I just think it bears having a presentation. So we and the community are aware of what's being used in the school district.
Would it, well, would it, I don't know if you, how much time you spent with Dr. Small or anyone else, understanding what the purpose of the program or what is actually done? Would it be helpful for you to have that opportunity to have that experience or get additional information about it?
I'm aware of what the purpose is, I support it. I think that the use of this material is at best controversial, and the community needs to be aware that this is being used in the school district. That's the point.
Okay. So, any other questions?
So, in the July meeting, I believe it was, I had mentioned in topics for future discussion, just a general presentation to the board about overall professional development, you know? And to me, this would fall under that umbrella in general, what kind of professional development goes on at District 211. I had asked for that previously as an upcoming agenda item, so I'm assuming at some point that will be an upcoming agenda item, and I'm just pointing out that I had brought that up earlier and this seems to be directly related to that. And so I wouldn't see the need for, in my view, we wouldn't need two separate presentations. I would, to me, this would be covered under my previous request.
I would see that as different from a comprehensive presentation on that program, but anybody else?
When I had made that request, I didn't ask for a deadline either because there were much more pressing issues than there still are. So I'm just operating under the general assumption that at some point, we will have a presentation to the board about professional development. And I had thought, well, this is professional development, perhaps it would be covered, but if you're wanting a single issue presentation on this particular book, then obviously that's a different matter.
If I may respond to that, I think it's pertinent because we, the district, is in the process of an equity program, and this is part of the basis of an equity program at Palatine High School, if not the district. So I think it is pertinent and timely to do this at the next board meeting.
Dr. Small, can you?
If it is the will of the board to have a presentation on equity, we will certainly put it in by school. I would only ask that we add in our other schools with it, along with Palatine.
Yeah, I was asking for an administration presentation. If it's all the schools, that's fine.
I'm sorry, so now I'm confused, is the topic for future discussion one on overall equity in our schools, which I would support? Or is the topic for future discussion a single issue presentation about this particular book?
That's the motion that's before us.
That's true.
That's the motion that we're talking about.
Yes.
To me, that seems, at this point, it seems to me a misuse of the board's time. I feel like I can get information about that book and the way it's used from you virtually anytime.
Do you believe the community is aware of this, Mrs. Cavill?
This is a public meeting and we're live streaming to everybody.
But prior to me bringing the topic up?
The instructor was in the agenda for last month's board meeting.
This, after some research and reading, I think the public needs to be aware of what's being used specifically.
I agree, I just don't agree with the input, you know, the implication that somehow this subject matter is being hidden. The author was in our last agenda, we talked about this before, and you're bringing it up again in an open meeting that we're live streaming, so.
Anyone else with comments or questions?
I'd probably like to look at the book personally and read it.
Okay. If I looked at the book, I would also want to know how it's being used, right? You know, just looking at a book, page 124, page 37, page 65, is not, to me, an appropriate evaluation of the information. So if this is material that's used, I'd like to know how it's used. If the entire book is presented to a student and they're asked to take it home, read through it, come back and let's discuss, and there's information in there that may not be appropriate or controversial or whatever the case might be, but I would like to learn a little bit more about how the program is taught, right? How the subject is presented, if that's the material being used, rather than just piece out certain parts of the material.
Yeah, that is my point of having a presentation. I honestly thought that there were other copies and that other board members would be able to review it prior to me bringing it up, but I, yeah.
But again, I'm saying it's not just the material, but it's how it's presented and how the program is used.
I agree, and that's why a comprehensive presentation. I think we need to know that, otherwise the stuff is just out of context.
This is what I'm saying, I feel like the level of governance goes even higher than that because we don't have just one school. And so I agree with, in generality here, absolutely, I'm not interested in, as an English teacher, I'm not interested in just picking a random passage out of a book and then pretending I understand it. I am interested in the context, but I think even the issue of board governance goes above that. We have more than just one school, so I would be more interested how that fits into the overall equity plan at Palatine High School, of which Palatine High School is just one piece of an overall equity plan district-wide, which to me is where the level of governance is supposed to be. I know that as a board, we approve, you know, new novels, for example, that the district adopts, you know, once a year, and I was lucky enough to learn more about that extremely rigorous process just over the last couple of weeks. And so I'm not under the impression that this book was just kind of picked off the shelf and then flown into the general school community without much of a second thought.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I'm not, I'm not making the assumption, knowing that how our district operates, you know, in book approval process for anything that is taught in any classroom district-wide, that this book was just kind of picked off.
Well, I'm not saying that, there was a contract.
I'd like to finish, please. And so if we're going to have a presentation, rather than hyper focusing on one particular book, which I'm not saying is unimportant, it is, at the level of board governance, to me, it would make more sense about a broader presentation about how that fits in with our overall equity plan and professional development. This is my point. I just feel like there's a gap between what our, I believed our role as a board to be and then the narrow focus on one particular book that we're discussing now.
And to Ms. Cavill's statement, I agree, I think that it would be good to have a benchmark considering where we are, and I'd like to know how the district determines which schools get a contract, by who, for what equity purposes, and what the foundational decisions are when Palatine may have a contract that the other four schools don't, and where that decision-making process is and the differences and the identifications and that whole process that got us to where we are now. And I think that would be a useful presentation. Obviously, if there's a specific reference to the material that Mr. Kramer is bringing up with relation to Palatine High School, I'm sure that it could be compared and contrasted to the other schools as well. But I would be in favor of having something as a presentation that benchmarks where we're at, especially considering what we'll be doing on October 26th.
Okay. Any other questions? So the motion before the board, and I'm paraphrasing because I don't have it written out in front of me, is that we would have a, we would request the superintendent to provide a comprehensive presentation regarding the Deep Equity Program at Palatine High School.
No, the Deep Equity Program, I did not say Palatine High School.
Okay, the Deep Equity Program. Is everyone clear on what the question is?
Dr. Small, are you clear? That is, that is used at Palatine High, okay.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Klinkowitz?
I'm torn. Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young? Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. LaFaver?
No. So that motion carries. All right, the next section of our agenda is committee reports. The first one is Northwest Suburban Special Education Organization. Mrs. Klipkowitz?
I will try to be brief. They're going to be opening it up October 26th in regards to Kirk School. They're looking to have during the week, you know, 10 to 15 hours of in-person instruction. They have a number of, 84% of the students, 123 students, want to be in the school. They've divided it into two groups, Group A and Group B. One group will start at 8:15 and go to 11:00. The other would be 11:45 to 2:30, so it would be half-days. One thing to note is they have had some students coming into the school during this time, and that depended on their IEPs. Sunrise Camp, and I know I've talked about Sunrise, it's in Bartlett, and if you've ever not had it, if you've not had an opportunity, it would be a good place to go and visit because it's a wonderful place. District 211 has used it for the students numerous times. It's also provides a lot of opportunities to students who may never have had the opportunity to experience it. There's, it's handicap accessible, the wheelchairs, the different courses, the programs are all set for students with disabilities and regular students. During the summer, Sunrise was setting aside some time slots for teachers or families from our member districts to be able to go over there, so still honoring all the COVID requirements. They also have some time allotments for others to come into the community, and they've been working really hard with families to give families a little bit of respite, a little bit of opportunity to come outdoors and just be able to relax a little bit. So that's what they're doing there, and they recognized the superintendent from District 59 and a gentleman from 59 as the shining stars, because this particular gentleman has been taking the, I believe it was the seventh graders from a couple of the different schools in 59, to an outdoor activity there. So again, giving kids an opportunity to experience fishing, to experience archery, to experience a variety of other things that they may not be able to do. So the opening and the sunrise were the highlight of it. Thank you.
Thank you. That will bring us to EdRed. Mrs. Klipkowitz, again.
Okay, and Ms. Hummel, if she has anything, you know, when I'm done, maybe could add to it. On October 7th, they had their kickoff, so it was all Zoom. Illinois Comptroller Susannah Mendoza spoke briefly, she talked about the state probably needing some help from the feds, uncertain what that's going to look like in the future. She spoke of managing the state debt as she's going along. Then Sarah Hartwick, the executive director, spoke a little bit about EdRed and talked about some of the priorities, which include advocacy, membership development, and community. She spoke a little bit about the accomplishments that they've had for 2020, property tax relief, ad hoc committee work, because there were a couple of different committees that were around, and they're looking to continue working on communication with all of the school districts that are participating in it. The priorities going forward are equity and access to education, financial planning, adequacy funding for K through 12, and looking at flexibility. Mandate relief allows for schools to be innovative, so we've had to be very innovative with the COVID. Some of the communication priorities are to continue to build and maintain partnerships, to elevate social media for their communication with the community stakeholders and schools. And, let me see. She also spoke a little bit about the ad hoc committees. There's an equity committee, and it has four subcommittees. I did not catch what all of those were. Another one is transportation, and some of the concerns during COVID and some of the barriers that maybe school districts faced in regards to transportation. And there's the Practitioner Legislative Action Team. That's the one that they had started where if they're in legislation and a legislator wants some information, where Sarah can reach out to maybe a particular school district or a member or a superintendent or maybe even a board member to give them a call to get some information, and they could be able to share that with that particular legislature. She also said they're going to have a finance committee, and that kind of summed it up and then talked about future meetings, so their next meeting is going to be November 6th, and that's going to be a Zoom meeting. And she said that EdRed is entering its And she said that EdRed is entering its 49th year. Ms. Hummel?
I have nothing else to add, thank you.
Thank you. That will bring us to the Budget and Finance Committee meeting. We had the meeting. It contained substantially similar information to tonight's meeting other than the supplements that were added at the request from the meeting. In addition, there were several charts that provided some sensitivity analysis to several of the variables that impact a property tax bill and the financial consequences. So if you're curious about that type of information, that presentation is still available on the district website, so. Okay. Anything else to add to that, Mr. Dombrowski?
No.
Okay, that will bring us to our announcements, which are here.
I have a couple of comments if you don't mind.
Sure.
First of all, I wanted to add that on October 19th, the Booster Club Presidents' Meeting will be held from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. via Zoom, where I'll be meeting with all the Booster Club Presidents and perhaps vice presidents to talk about this year and share best practices. I'm looking forward to that. According to the upcoming items, it says October 26th is a special board meeting. Is that accurate? Okay. And October 28th, I'd like to remind the board that the North Cook Division Meeting is being held that evening. It is free, it is virtual, and the topic is navigating the future with COVID-19. So it should be very informative, a great way for us to hear from other board members in other school districts across the state on what they anticipate and are doing around the pandemic.
And you said that was October 28th, is that right?
It is October 28th at 6:15. And registration's available at the IASB website.
Okay, thank you. All right, that will bring us to our closed session items. We have a suggested motion that the Board of Education accepts the retirement requests of Teresa Russell, effective May 2023, according to the Master Contract of the District 21 Teachers Union; Thomas Johnson, effective May 2021, according to the Master Contract of the District 21 United Support Staff; and Bonnie Tierney, effective December 2020, according to the Master Contract of the District 21 Teachers Union. Can someone please move that?
Someone.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Klipkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Lefever?
Aye. All right, if there's nothing further from anybody, I just wanted to express my appreciation for all the work that's been done to get the students back in school as soon as possible. I would imagine there are a lot of differences between our various schools and a bigger opportunity for some to work through the math and the numbers and however you put it, like the buy seat assignments. So just a thank you to everyone involved in that process. And I'm sure it involved the principals or other administrators at the schools. If you could just extend that, thank you. I think everyone appreciates everything that's been done, so thank you. All right, if there's nothing else, we are adjourned.